Okay, very good then at 7:02 PM. Oh, I guess is there something? It is now 7:02 PM and the executive session concluded five minutes ago. So at this time, the Board of Trustees is once more in open session. Guess we do not need a call the roll, correct?
I don't, I can just if you want to.
Let's call the rolls.
All right.
Yeah.
Mayor Larson.
Here.
Trustee Taylor.
Here.
Trustee Apt.
Here.
Trustee Coombs Ismail.
Here.
Mayor Proton Baumhofer.
Here.
Danforth.
Here.
Trustee Corvallin.
Here.
Good, very good. I am trying to share my screen, but this computer is being recalcitrant right now. There we go. So we have three items on the consent agenda, the warrants, the meeting minutes, and approval or appointment of Laura King to the Sustainability Advisory Board vacancy.
And Laura is uptown, otherwise she would be here tonight, so she does have a letter written to the Board of Trustees plus her resume in the agenda.
All right, well, in absentia, I want to thank Laura for still joining the, applying to join the SAB.
And she did attend their last meeting, so I will tell you that Sab did speak with them. I don't know Alan if he wants to jump in, but they were in full support. She is very connected to the elementary school, and I know Sab was really looking forward to strengthening that relationship.
Very good. Any trustees have?
I can first read it. Looks like she's very well qualified.
Any other questions or comments on the consent agenda? If not, do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
A motion to approve.
See Corvallin, we have a second?
Trustee Taylor, second.
Trustee Taylor, seconds. Miranda?
Mayor Proton Baumhofer.
Yes.
Trustee Coombs Ismail.
Yes.
Trustee Apt.
Yes.
Mayor Larson. Trustee Danforth.
Yeah.
Trustee Corvallin.
Yes.
Trustee Taylor.
Yes.
So the agenda passes. Yet moving on in the agenda this evening, we have going into public comment on nine agenda items, we have two letters that were written to the board. Thank you to those individuals who wrote those, but if anyone else would like to speak for three minutes on any item not on the agenda, now is your chance. Please raise your hand or unmute yourself and begin speaking. Not hearing or seeing anyone, we will continue forward. We have no informational items yet, so our first action item is a minor subdivision replat for 571 Brown Street. I believe our town planning officer, Cynthia Backy, will be introducing this one for us. Welcome Cynthia.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, trustees. Can everyone hear me?
Sounds good.
Okay, I'm calling in by phone. Sorry, I can't see everyone. We are looking at the consideration of a minor subdivision replat application. It was submitted by Joseph Brian Tarpill. He goes by Brian Tarpill. He is the property owner at 571 Brown Street. That the first proposal as it came in, it was considered in electronic virtual meeting format in April, and we required social distancing protocol, so that was our very first electronic meeting format. It was an interesting approach, and we're still working on that at the planning commission level, but I believe Brian is with us. I spoke to him a little bit ago and asked him to call in early.
And he is here.
Okay, great. So Brian is the property owner at 571 Brown Street. The property is forty-three thousand eight hundred and thirty-seven square feet, and he would like to split that into two separate parcels of unequal size. So the district size in the low-density residential requires sixteen thousand square foot per dwelling unit, and he's proposing to have the northern parcel, so he wanted to split it in northern and southern parcels. The northern parcel would be twenty thousand one hundred and ten square feet, well above the district size of sixteen thousand square feet, and the southern parcel that encompasses his house would be twenty-three thousand seven hundred and twenty-seven square feet. There was a difference of five hundred square feet in Boulder County property search, and I took that to the county surveyor, Lee Stedel, who's a Netherland resident, to look it over, and he looked over the submitted improvement survey plat and didn't see any issues with it, said it was really minor and there was no major issue with that. The property can be accessed via town road, which is King Place, or also Brown Street, which is a private road. He noted in his narrative that there are twenty-three homes within a three-hundred-foot buffer of his property, and they vary in size. Many are out of compliance with the district setbacks because of the timeframe they were built. So many of them were built during nineteen fifty-four to ninety-eight. The town adopted zoning laws in nineteen eighty-one, so some of those obviously didn't meet zoning laws before we had them. There were no major concerns expressed through the fire department. Chris Pelletiere, as you probably saw in the packet, had included a sign-off on easements, and that was included in the packet documents. This was publicly noticed through the, on the public property notice, the neighbor notifications that go, that are within the three-hundred-foot buffer, and also within the newspaper, and I can answer any questions that the board may have.
Would have any questions for Cynthia? Not, I'd just like to give an opportunity to the homeowner, Brian Tarpill. Would you like to address the board for a minute or two?
Sure. Yes, my name is Brian, and I moved to town about a year and a half ago when I purchased this property, and the northern half or so of the property, I just don't use and don't see myself using, and it seems like a good opportunity to add additional housing to the town, and also to make the rather expensive purchase price work better for me, whether I sell it or develop that lot myself. I really don't know at this point which direction I'll go, but that is, that's my aim, is to create one more building lot for the town.
Well, thank you very much. Any other, does any member of the boards have questions? If not, I'd like to open this up for public comment as it is an action item. Any member of the public on the, on this Zoom call was welcome to comment for three minutes. Hearing and seeing none, I will bring it back to the board. I guess any further comments, thoughts, questions from the Board of Trustees, or we can make this a quick one and look for a motion.
I make a motion to approve. This is trustee Danforth.
Trustee Taylor, I second.
We have a motion and a second on the table. Miranda?
Trustee Coombs Ismail.
Yes.
Trustee Taylor.
Yes.
Trustee Apt.
Yes.
Trustee Danforth.
Yeah.
Mayor Proton Baumhofer.
Yes.
Trustee Corvallin.
No.
Mayor Larson.
Yes. Brutal for minor subdivision replat of 571 Brown Street passes by a vote of six to one.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, trustees. Thank you, Brian.
Thank you.
Cynthia and Brian.
Thank you.
You did both as well. All right, the second action item this evening is a return to something we addressed about a month ago, which is the Memorandum of Understanding the Vision for Improving Forest Health and Reducing Wildfire Risk in the County. I believe you are going to introduce this one or why we're discussing it again tonight, correct, Miranda?
Yep, I'm going to introduce it, and then I'm going to pass it on to some other people who are here. On May 5th, at the Board of Trustees meeting, you all had requested that ProSAB look over this MRU, MOU, and they did at their May meeting, and then finalized their recommendations at their June meeting, so I'd like to pass it over to trustee Coombs Ismail, who he took the lead on some of those recommendations that you see. And then we also have Maya McHammer with ForeMile, who can also speak to this as well. So I'm going to pass it over to you, trustee Coombs Ismail.
Yeah, in the process of ProSAB reviewing this MOU, we, you know, actually got more and more excited about it, and we think it's a great, a great thing for the Town of Netherland to be involved in. Maya came to visit our ProSAB meeting last time around and, you know, really encouraged us as to the kind of the goals and behind this MOU and what it's really for, and how it really kind of is a community-driven project, and that really excites a lot. We did think that it could be strengthened in some kind of key areas, and we listed those out here. I'm not going to read through this document, but you can see it's diversity perspectives, education collaboration, public involvement, forest ecologies and wildlife habitat, and social issues that we don't think were addressed as strongly as they could have been in that MOU. And I would point out that we were operating on an older draft that came from that BOT meeting where this was first presented. There was a newer draft out there that we did not review, so I've attached the draft that we did review to the recommendation that ProSAB put forward, and then it's followed by the newest draft, which does not, again, fully address some of these concerns that we had or areas where we hoped it would be strengthened. So our recommendation at the end was that, you know, the Town of Netherland should, should sign this MOU and should become part of the drafting process and should advocate for these five points that ProSAB has laid out.
Thank you, Eric. And also thank you for just the process you guys went through and the comments you guys came up with, and here were really good. Really appreciate the work you and ProSAB did on this. Maya, would you like to speak on this?
I would just like to quickly say that I also appreciate the time that everybody went through reviewing that draft, and that I have read the recommendations that ProSAB came up with, and in terms of process, it was my understanding that those first needed to be approved by the Board of Trustees before we start trying to integrate some of those comments into the current draft. So I have read them, but we haven't worked any of those comments into a draft yet, so after, if it does get approved tonight, then we'll work on integrating some of those and then send another draft back to you while. But just to quickly address a couple of the things that were brought up regarding the science group and needing to represent a diversity of perspectives, I have shared those recommendations with a couple of people, and I think everybody supports that, and that the Colorado Forest Restoration Institute will probably head up that science group, and they're, they really are about ecological forest health, so it will be awesome to have them there. And then also Colorado Parks and Wildlife has decided to also sign on to the MOU, and so that brings, you know, a strong wildlife biologist perspective to the group as well. So we really are trying to represent that diversity of perspectives. And then also strengthening language in the education committee. A lot of those recommendations were awesome, and we're excited to look at ways to integrate those into, into the MOU. So I'm happy to answer any other questions, but I also just really look forward to working with the town and the community, you know, to find out more about what your, all your priorities are.
Thank you, Maya. I'm just going to head down the list of trustees to let everyone, if there's any questions, comments, or thoughts before we go to public comment, beginning with trustee Apt.
I appreciate the efforts, and I think we should move forward.
Mayor Proton Baumhofer.
Yeah. Kind of partly in that ProSAB meeting during this time, in and out of cellphone reception. The ProSAB took a really long time to evaluate this, add what they thought was good, and so I think what's before us is very, very well thoroughly looked over, and I think we should move forward with the recommendations from ProSAB.
Very good. Trustee Taylor?
I felt very concerned that while these are good ideas that need to be incorporated, I'm not persuaded that they belong in the MOU itself. For example, insisting that we use existing science, does that, doesn't that better fit by incorporating, by including people in the Science Committee in Section Three and have one of our people make sure that the scientists use the older research as previous research, which is what the MOU requires? And I have a couple of questions. We're indicating flora and fauna as stakeholders, and I've never heard of non-voting things as stakeholders. It just seems ineffective to include flora and stakeholders. I mean, I understand the idea, and I think that these are places that are best represented by members of ProSAB being part of those committees and bringing this information not into the MOU, but into the implementation document. That's, that's my primary concern. Not that these are bad ideas, but they, I'm not sure that they belong in the Memorandum of Understanding, which is a document identifying a method whereby to begin doing something. Is the doing something that's important, that these affect more than the MOU? And Maya, if you or trustee Coombs Ismail would like to enlighten me on this, I would appreciate it.
Um, yeah. Well, do you want to go ahead, Eric?
Yeah, I'll say that, you know, ProSAB doesn't necessarily, ProSAB didn't write anything here that says we won't sign the MOU unless all of these, for word in the way that we phrase it, rather more to put our position out there regarding those particular topics and where we want language to be strengthened. We, I think that are concerned that agencies that have a lot of financial weight behind them, and also a lot of financial demands placed upon them, will drive the conversation unless the MOU kind of enshrines certain ideals and certain principles and perspectives, and that is why we want some of these ideas to be reflected in the, at the MOU level, especially because some of the stakeholders, as they were, which, I mean, I don't see a federal agency as being any greater a stakeholder than, you know, the creatures and plants that actually live in a forest necessarily, depending on your perspective here. So, so I do think that that there is a place in the MOU for language like that, and, but I'm not expecting it to be word-for-word the language that we've used here.
So if these words ended up in an implementation document following the MOU, right, the MOU itself, you would be advocating these words being in a document, perhaps they don't end up in the MOU?
No.
I would also add to that, that it is unlikely that, I mean, it would not be represented word-for-word in the MOU, but we try to get, integrate concepts into that. And I also agree with, forget your name, who was just speaking, with your concerns, but that you're right, that the really hard, complex work starts after the MOU is signed, and that is when, you know, we really kind of dig down nitty-gritty of what communities need and what they value and what they prioritize, and that at that time, when we start really thinking about planning and implementation, is where we need communities to be represented in terms of, you know, what they value, make sure that those voices are heard. And through our coalition, that is what we intend to do with communities within the science group, within the education group, and within any implementation as well. And so we also want that to happen.
Thank you.
Trustee Danforth?
Hi, yeah, I appreciate all the hard work that's gone into this, and if you guys believe that all the language that's there in the MOU deserves to be there, I don't think I have a problem with it being lengthy. So I'm all for what you guys are doing, and I don't really have any, any questions.
Trustee Corvallin?
Okay, yeah, I love the additional language that needs, I think it needs to be in there, not word-for-word, but I don't think it should, document should be approved without some of those things that were said, like de prioritaries and cutting and logging as primary strategies, education and enforcement, primary stakeholders are the primary stakeholders, the residents and the wildlife, and, and everything in there, I think is really important. And I'll tell you, I don't want this to turn into another four-side-two type situation where we're fighting constantly to save a tree, or is this a logging project or is this a forest health project? So let's just keep, if you don't have that language in there, it becomes another logging project, because that's what a lot of people default to when they think of forest health. And I mean, there's so many components when it comes to logging, where you can log. Sometimes you log a forest, and it turns into a beautiful meadow, and sometimes it turns into a worse fire hazard, and that's kind of the science that is needed in this. So I think stick that language in there as much as possible.
Okay, thank you.
And people involvement, citizens know areas. So if there is an area in question you, that specifically say you needed something dealt with over, off of sugarloaf or something, engage the residents, because nobody knows the trails better than residents, because we all hike our woods. We know it like the back of our hand. So best resource are your people.
Yes, I agree.
Thank you, Tanya. Yeah, I think the language is good, and I just think in terms of process, what we're looking at tonight is to move into this next stage of drafting. Is that correct, Maya?
Yeah, if, I think if you all approve ProSAB's that document, then we will then take it back and try to integrate the language and the concepts into the MOU, and then we'll send you another draft where I can highlight where things were added or respond to your comments and stuff. And then they are looking at trying to have all of the signatories ready by mid-August, August 13th, I think. So I'm not sure when your next August meeting is, but that would be the goal for signing.
All right. Sounds like a good plan. Thank you.
Maya, could I just ask if there are, if there are open meetings regarding the drafting process that, that we hear about it, and that we have maybe the opportunity to participate in that as well?
Yeah, is the best way to include you guys to email Miranda? Yes, okay. Yes, I will be back.
This is an action item, so we'll be taking a vote on whether to adopt those. So I will open this up now to public comment. If anyone from the public would like to speak on this matter, now is your chance. Please either raise your hand or begin speaking for three minutes.
Kathleen just sent a comment. She said, I want to thank ProSAB for their consider and sensible input. I fully support all the concepts in the comments, and I'm hopeful that they will be included in the MOU, and that's from Kathleen Jibai.
Thank you, Ms. Jibai. Anyone else? If not, we'll bring this back to the board. Would anyone from the board like to make a motion?
Could you put it on the screen so that we can see what we're supposed to be seeing? Thank you. Yeah, just to know what we're voting on.
This is Baumhofer, motion to approve MOU.
Alan, app second.
Trustee Taylor.
No.
Trustee Danforth.
Yeah.
Trustee Apt.
Yes.
Trustee Coombs Ismail.
Yes.
Mayor Larson.
Yes.
Trustee Corvallin.
Yes.
Mayor Proton Baumhofer.
Motion passes. Thank you, Maya, Eric, and all of ProSAB for the work you've done. We look forward very much to seeing the next draft of the MOU. On is a resolution with regards to the Federal CARES Act funds, and I believe this one is going to be introduced by our town attorney.
Good evening, Mayor. Trustees, Jennifer Mattson, Town Attorney. The item for you tonight is a draft resolution 2025, which allows the town to enter into a collaborative agreement with Boulder County and other municipalities in the county regarding the distribution of federal funds received from the CARES Act. As you all may know, that in March of this year, the federal government enacted the CARES Act to provide emergency assistance for individuals, families, and businesses affected by COVID, and a portion of this CARES Act also established a coronavirus relief fund. This money was to go to state and local governments to help cover necessary expenses that are incurred between the period of March 1, 2020, and December 31, 2020, due to COVID-19, and that were not included in their annual budget. The state of Colorado is appropriating approximately twenty-seven million of these funds to be used by Boulder County local governments to reimburse those governments for these expenses. DOLA has been designated as the state of Colorado's fiscal agent for the fund, and will administer reimbursement of the fund. Under the agreement with Boulder County and the other municipalities, it was determined that Netherland would receive sixty-nine thousand three hundred and nine dollars of the twenty-seven, approximately twenty-eight million that's given to Boulder County to their pot, and this is based on the July 2018 population. So the resolution in front of you tonight is essentially to allow Mayor Larson to sign the collaborative agreement with the, with Boulder County and the other municipalities in Boulder. Because DOLA had a deadline of July 7th to opt in to this program, Mayor Larson has signed the agreement, and so the resolution actually is a ratification of his signature last week on that letter agreement. And Karen may have more information, because I know she was very heavily involved in these negotiations and discussions.
The only thing I would add is that today, as our town attorney, Jennifer Mattson, has stated, was the deadline to opt in on the DOLA website, so the staff has done that. So we, we have met the deadline, and as also was stated, that's the reason why we had to have the mayor sign off on it prior to bringing it to you, and that's why this is a ratification. It's all good, though. There's certainly no issues that staff could see in participating in this program and taking advantage of these, these funds to be used to reimburse us for COVID expenses.
Thank you, Jennifer. Thank you, Karen. We'll go with the board for comments or questions for town staff regarding this, beginning with Tanya.
I don't, good.
Okay, Lindsay?
Yeah, I think that we can just move forward with this. I don't have any questions.
Okay, Eric? Okay, Eric.
Let's get this done.
All right, Julian.
I agree.
Alan.
I agree. Let's just move it, move it ahead.
Finally, Jonathan. All right, this is an action item, so I will open this up to public comments if anyone from the public would like to speak on this resolution. Neither hearing nor seeing any hands. I will bring it back to the board and. Look for a motion from a member of the Board of Trustees.
Taylor, motion to approve.
Julian Taylor with a motion approved.
Trustee Danforth, second.
And a second. Miranda.
Mayor Larson.
Yes.
Trustee Cooms Ismail.
Yes.
Trustee Danforth.
Yeah.
Trustee Taylor.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Baumhofer.
Yes.
Trustee Corvallin.
Yes.
She act.
Very good. A resolution passes to accept the cares funds money. Thank you guys all very much. We are, that concludes the action items for the night. So we are moving into discussion items. Beginning with the good this, beginning with a discussion of amendments to our subdivision and lot line adjustment regulations. I will be again returning to our town attorney Jennifer Madison to introduce this one.
Hello, everybody again. Uh, so the reason this is a discussion item related to um. A request or recommendation by the Planning Commission. And by town staff to review and make amendments to subdivision regulations. In the town code. Um, at the February 26 meeting, the Planning Commission met. And discussed problems with the subdivision regulations and lot line adjustment regulations. And um, requested that these. That these issues be brought to the Board of Trustees. So a little bit of background um, on subdivision regulations. Municipal municipalities have authority to adopt these regulations and what they do is that subdivision regulations essentially help. Um, the municipality work with property owners. To divide property and develop individual parcels of land. Um, the subdivision regulations are used as a tool to implement municipal plans. And what they essentially entail is a, the regulations define the process and procedure. For obtaining approval from the town to divide property. And also set the criteria by which these applications are judged. There's the subdivision regulations in Netherlands were adopted in 1983. And there have been some minor amendments to these regulations. However, there haven't been any significant amendments or changes since they were adopted approximately 40 years ago. And in working with the regulations and processing applications. Town staff and the Planning Commission have recognized some ambiguities and inconsistencies in the regulations. And there are also several holes. There are processes that are not um. That are not specified in the subdivision regulations. And without having a process or procedure, then oftentimes town staff is having to make up a procedure. Um, so the recommendation for the amendment is to clarify the ambiguities and. Streamline the process for minor subdivisions, which are typically um, for. Parcels that are divided into four or less lots. And then to allow for administrative approval of the of the simple process of lot line adjustments. Um, one thing I did want to comment is that the. The subdivision of property does not change zoning requirements and that. When an application is in front of the Planning Commission or the Board of Trustees, essentially that application is reviewed. Um, with also the zoning regulations. So it doesn't change the density requirements. Um. And let me see if there was anything else that I wanted to mention. That's it. So I don't know if Miranda has anything else or or Karen has to add, but. That's what I have on this.
Uh, no, I think the only thing for me to this is my to add is just, you know, we actually, we have, you know, quite a list of some municipal code. Uh, changes, but we felt like, you know, given what comes before the Planning Commission, that these were two of the the most critical. Obviously, you saw a minor subdivision even tonight. And so that's why this is coming before you now is we're kind of prioritizing by what is is kind of in our immediate world and and that need for changes in the code.
Thank you, Miranda and Jennifer. To clarify, what we're looking at tonight is just to. Give direction to town staff to pursue these changes to to look at what these incongruities, these ambiguities. Are in the code and what do we take to fix it? And then it would come back to the board as a action item at some point in the future, correct?
That's correct with it, just a very slight tweak because this, these are subdivision regulations. They would actually go back to the, they'd go to the Planning Commission first. For recommendation. Um, and and one thing else to mention, I have this in the aim, but. We have some really good um, samples to work from other municipalities who've recently updated their code. I included group, the Blue River subdivision regulation because that was um, changes that were made by my law firm.
Okay. Uh, are there any questions from the Board of Trustees for the firm or in general?
Uh, yes. Does this make it easier for people to subdivide properties? Is this changing some of the limitations we do have for density in Netherlands at all?
It it doesn't change the density limitation. So the density is set out in the zoning code. And so essentially, if you have um, property in the mountain residential. Uh, zoning area, Big Springs. You, you have to have a lot size of one acre and that's specified in the zoning code. So you couldn't use the subdivision regulations. To circumvent the.
That's strange because a lot of my neighbors only have half acre lots in Big Springs. What, why is that?
There's two different types of zoning in Big Springs. You have to look at.
Got you. Alright, so that was confusing, but um. Does this make it easier for people? Less loops hoops to jump through? Is this makes it easier for people or is it just makes it easier for you?
It it makes it easier in terms of the process. And setting everything out. It doesn't make it, the approval is not going to be any easier.
Okay, that's what I want. Yeah, thank you.
This is uh, trustee Danforth. Um, and I I'm all for reviewing this and seeing if we can have clearer language. And hopefully eliminate the need, I think, for the minor subdivision approval process to come before, say, the Board of Trustees. Um, I mean, we just had one earlier this evening that it fits with all the guidelines um, to create. Two parcels that fit with the zoning, fit with the neighborhood. And it seemed almost silly to have that on our agenda as nobody had any questions about it because it did conform already to our. Our standards. So I think streamlining that so it doesn't come onto our agendas and waste our time. Um, I'm I'm definitely for that, so. Um, I appreciate you guys taking a look at this stuff and and hopefully laying it out, but if if we could look at. Stringlining the approval and having town staff, I think, approve the straightforward ones. Um, you know, that would be great.
So so this eliminates anybody except Planning Commission from approving. There's not a second oversight process then. You're saying no more Board of Trustees, just Planning Commission gets to decide on subdivisions.
It's for minor, minor subdivisions, so like.
Well, that's not so minor, really, four houses in what was one lot for a neighbor or for.
Tonight is just looking at making the changes. There are no proposed changes tonight.
I know, I'm just, I understand. I'm just trying to understand what's going on, just to see, you know.
I mean, it's just like. Yeah, to me, it's just like what we did earlier today where there was a one big lot in the neighborhood, all zone the same. All zoned low-density residential, which already sets the size of lots that that they can go down to a minimum lot size. And so. This guy saying that he has a very large lot and he wants us, wants to split it into two lots that fit in that zoning and fit in that neighborhood. I don't know why we have to get involved in something that's. That already matches all of the requirements. I mean, that, I think that's the point of having those requirements.
This is trustee Cooms Ismail. Um, I, well, just to address what was, what what was just said. Um, yeah, I'm not, I'm not sure that I would necessarily, you know, be in favor of removing uh, BOT oversight on, you know, minor subdivisions. I'm not sure yet. I haven't really uh, taken the time to figure it out uh, in in terms of how I feel about it, but. Uh, when it comes to uh, adjusting the code for ambiguities and inconsistencies, I just wonder. If there, if there's any examples uh, any staff could give us on that, like what what kind of things are we talking about here?
I I can give you, um, I can give you one example of. Of a hole that's in the code. And that is that if there is a request to make an amendment to a subdivision plat. There is no, no provision, no process, no procedure specified in town regulations as to how to make an amendment. Um, so essentially then town staff is trying to figure out where does this. Where does this um, fit and coming up with a process and this potentially leads to different situations being handled differently.
Gotcha. Thank you. Yeah, I would really appreciate um, if we could uh, you know, if if town staff does go ahead and. And do this, that we see kind of side by side, you know, how the code is being, how the code would be altered and all of that. And I'm sure that's. What you intended on doing anyway, but that would really help to like go through point by point and really figure out uh, you know. What things we want here and what things we don't rather. I I wouldn't want to approach this kind of in a wholesale manner, I guess is what I'm saying. Where we uh, just completely revise it and vote up and down on it, but rather that we actually. Make sure that it's still in in line with how the BOT wants to oversee the, you know, subdivision of the town essentially.
Any other comments from members of the board?
Uh, yeah, I guess I'm just. I would like to give the staff the direction to say, yeah, start looking at inconsistencies in our code because there are inconsistencies. There's also. Some concern I have here because certain subdivisions in our code are required to have easements and they don't. And I'm wondering if. Providing, you know, and a way to amend the code then opens us up for losing certain easements because. They're controversial. Um, Netherlands has a habit of shooting itself in the foot and refusing to actually adapt. To the needs of the time. And in continually shooting ourselves in the foot is basically giving the BOT all this oversight and all this control or with the IGA. Not giving BOT oversight and control. So we're kind of contrary and splitting this. Do we want BOT to have control of subdivision plaques? As well as IBA and growth of town? Or do we not? And right now, that's not really decided that I think is going to be. Part of the evaluation of Envision 2020 and part of the envisioning of 2030. And I think it's really hard to say that, yeah, the BOT needs to have oversight of this versus town staff needs to have direction. The reality is, this is the work that town staff does. This is their job. These are the things they are finding. So I think it is. Definitely right right now to say, let's let town staff move forward. And let's continue to encourage them to find these holes in our code. And when they have questions, to make note of these things to then bring back to the Planning Commission because they are a quasi judicial. Committee appointed by the BOT, the elected officials of our government process in the town of Netherlands. And I think we really need to put this in perspective. So I would say let's rah rah, good job, town staff, keep finding these things. Let's give them the direction. And let's table the discussion of does BOT need to have oversight of this? Or can town staff have oversight of this until we hear from the citizens? In 2020's evaluation and in Envision 2030, because that's who we represent. And that's all I got.
Thank you, Jonathan. Anyone else?
Yeah, and I'd like to just. I'd like to echo what trustee Cooms Esmaile said about seeing what, seeing uh, the changes side by side. Hopefully, the changes are to in to reduce ambiguity and of reducing ambiguity. And so I'm hoping, I know this is not always possible, but I'm hoping that we would be able to see a copy where we can see. Old version, new version, side by side. I think that would be tremendously helpful in understanding. What the strategy was for correcting the ambiguity. Uh, thank you very much. That's all.
Uh, yeah, I think certainly the way it's been done in the past is to have a track changes version where red lines are highlighting what's been changed within the new. And I'll encourage the Planning Commission and town staff to do the same on this one. Any further board comments?
Yeah, this is Alan. I just uh. Uh, concur that with Jonathan and that we do need some fine tuning of our code. I understand the concerns of other people on the board about oversight. Um, but I, you know, I think back to the previous BOT. Where Dallas took it upon himself to work with the Planning Commission to try to. Um, spot ambiguities in the code and fix it and at least bring it to our attention and. It was a big job. I mean, this is not perfect by any means, so I do do appreciate the effort to uh. Try to get the code to be more straightforward.
Any pub, would anyone from the public like to weigh in on this one? Uh, views on whether or not we should be trying to remove the ambiguities in the code? Not seeing or hearing anything. We'll bring it back to the board. Uh, it sounds like we're all in fairly good agreement that we would like the town staff to look at these ambiguities. While work with the Planning Commission to identify them, to identify potential fixes to them that will take some of the burden off of town staff for him and uh. Uh, risks of treating one applicant differently than another simply because there's a hole in our town code that they don't uh. That doesn't lay out a plan or a procedure for whatever it is that comes up. So yeah, I think we are, it sounds like we're in agreement to have town staff move forward and drafting these changes to the subdivision uh, code.
I just have one quick note and and when it comes to, you know, how we're presented with this, I mean. You know, obviously, I know, I know, I know that this is difficult, but the, as much as possible, if we can know. You know, whether or not the change was made to correct an ambiguity or if it was, you know, because previously in the document, there was a. There was a contradictory statement and this is resolving that contradiction. That would be so, so, so helpful for for me at least in terms of evaluating what's going on. Um, and then also know like where changes are being made for other purposes, like potentially streamlining or, you know, reducing administrative overhead or, you know, kind of functional changes to the code. That would see uh, you know, a functional change in the way we govern the town uh, essentially. So I would really like to know. At least some little bit of intention behind what the changes are.
Sounds good. Town staff, is that the direction or we have, we. Town staff, is that the direction or we, have we given you clear direction this evening?
Yes, I think so. Jennifer?
Yes, that sounds good. Yes.
Okay, very good. Thank you guys very much. Uh, I guess, yeah, we will see this again after the planning commission. You guys have a crack at it. Uh, next question item is meeting accessibility and per, public participation. And I'm scrolling, I'm scrolling. I'm gonna hand this one over fairly quickly to trustee Combs Ismail, uh, because he is the one done the work on this along with trustee apt in bringing it. Um, came out of some, I know some of the things like the, some items came up from, I believe I see right here Jesse Ansari's comments a few, uh, weeks ago, month ago, losing track of time about naming. And so, uh, some of these are things we've already kind of taken into account and, uh, I think it's a good thing for us to look at what we can do with our, our, our board policies to encourage as much participation as possible. So trustee Combs Ismail.
Yeah, the first thing that I want to stress here is that, um, you know, these are not, uh, written with the intention that they become policy as they are. They're, they're written as kind of provocations for discussion as, as a discussion item, I think should probably be. Um, you know, I was not actually sitting there thinking of crafting the pol, the specific policies to achieve these, which I see more as kind of goals for what we might do for meeting accessibility, nor do I necessarily, you know, on a personal level, believe that we should absolutely adopt all of these at all costs. Um, this is a compilation of a, a number of concerns, uh, that people have been sending to me and that I've actually solicited and wondered, you know, why people don't come to meetings or, or for, you know, why, why we might, why they think we might be seeing lower attendance. And these were some of the, some of the responses that I got that I tried to compile here as faithfully as I could into potential solutions to those issues. So, uh, yeah, this is much more for discussion than it is saying like, I think these should be adopted as policy. And, yeah, I don't know if we wanna, if we wanna look at these, uh, one at a time or not, but you know, the intention behind it is that, um, at least on a personal level, I, I do believe that participation is fundamental to democracy and that democracy is more than voting and that it is, uh, our responsibility not only to do the business of the town in these meetings, but also to solicit public participation in that business and to make sure that, uh, governance is really coming from the community. And I think that, that's an active thing, not a passive thing. It's not simply a case of saying meetings are open, you can show up if you feel like it, but actually demonstrating actively, you know, uh, that we want people to be there and that we want them to participate. And I'm, uh, tried to put together a few ideas here that I think might encourage that participation.
All right, so let's, uh, throw this open. Or did you have more to say? Sorry.
No, I mean, I think that we can start discussing them. I think they're.
That's, yeah. Now, I was gonna throw this open for sort of general discussion from, from the board is, uh, you guys have, uh, at least have now been, well, we haven't had any open public meetings in person since a lot of you joined the board. So we're still in this weird virtual limbo, but you know, let's, uh, just kick around ideas for ways we can improve and, uh, I'm gonna just throw this open. So open discussion from the board.
So this is trustee Taylor. I think I would feel most comfortable reviewing these as six separate discussions. Am I being heard? Oh, I'm sorry. I thought I was muted there. As six separate discussions because each one I believe is a fairly large discussion. Just for example, item number one. I'm wondering what the specific problem, what specific problem we are trying to solve with item number one. Reading item number one, I'm thinking, oh, I guess, I guess I can kind of see what problem we're trying to solve. But without having something explicit saying, this is the problem and this is how it solves the problem, I'm not entirely seeing it right now. I'm feeling pretty comfortable asking people as we did at the last meeting, give us your name, whether you're a resident or not. And I think that's because it's nice to know if talking to a constituent or to an outside neighbor who has an interest. I think that brings context that's important. And I also think that it's important for people to say their name, for someone to stand up for what it is they're saying. I, as I was reading this, was reminded that we may have an actual problem that's not specifically stated here with people who, out of fear of retribution, may need to appear anonymously. And we kind of stumbled through that in the meetings ago with a person who probably should have been 100 anonymous. And it would be nice if we could introduce a specific procedure whereby someone who is afraid of retribution may be 100% anonymous. But if that's not an absolute amazing exception to the rule, that tells the board that we have a problem. If everyone wants to be anonymous, then we have some peacekeeping to do. So this is just item number one and I, item number one could stand a nice bit of discussion, including perhaps expand. Is this actually an issue of anonymity where anonymity is required? Meaning perhaps we go further into how do we support anonymous people who are concerned about retribution? So this is number one, and I'm not going to go into the other five because I got plenty of stuff on them too. I like to see them as separate discussions.
I was gonna say, I think, uh, I agree with you. I think it would be a lot easier to organize our thoughts if we do step through them one by one. And I think you just opened up, uh, item number one very nicely. Uh, so let's, let's do that. Let's focus on the, the name and address statement. Um, where it currently stands is that we ask, uh, everyone to state their name and whether they are a resident or of Netherlands or not. We have had comments about the need for anonymity under certain cases and, uh, yeah. Any other thoughts on that one?
Yeah, I mean, I'm like, I concur that, uh, uh, this should be discussed one by one. And I think this was prompted, I think, by Eric, by someone who needed, uh, who was, who feared retribution. And I think, uh, one way, uh, to make this, uh, a case of public record would be to just ask people to give the town clerk their, their actual address. And then maybe they could just state their name and say, do they live in Netherlands or not? And that's the end of the, all they need to say to, uh, to appear. I don't like completely anonymous unless there's already been, uh, a case of retribution upfront, but we should be, uh, somewhat flexible too.
Yeah, that was, uh, the intention would be that name and addresses are still collected for public record. Uh, that is not removed. What is eliminated here is the sort of performative statement allowed of the name and address, that that, uh, is not actually necessary. Um, when addressing the BOT, when that name and address are collected in another way, and it's essentially redundant and that people ha, do have concerns regarding being intimidated, uh, if they do provide their name and address together. So, uh, yeah, I don't think there is anyone suggesting that names and addresses not be collected at all. Uh, this rather is more about the, uh, the requirement to state that aloud before addressing the BOT.
Well, I, I do like the idea of saying you're a resident or not. Just that's, that's just kind of does help put things in context. Cause I do think, I mean, maybe this is wrong, but I think residents have more clout with their opinions or I'm a business owner in town. Some, uh, some are specifically to say why you're interested in what goes on in town. My child goes to school at town, but I don't know. I guess we all have interests in town. Knowing someone's a resident or a business owner would be helpful.
Yeah, it does become, uh, difficult, I think, to, to put in requirements that in some way really exclude certain folks, uh, who do have legitimate interest in town affairs, right?
A lot of people have kids.
Right, but also maybe someone from the unhoused community, right? I mean, like these sorts of things, uh, matter.
I couldn't hear you. The what house?
Like a, a, a member of the unhoused community in town, right?
Oh, I got you. Yeah.
That has experienced something, something that has to do with town governance and wants to tell us about it.
It'd be nice to know that's sort of specific, like, uh, I'm, I don't know, just if it's, I don't want anyone's specific address, but general region or the fact that they're unhoused might change my perspective on their comment. But I guess you're saying we shouldn't have any thing that clouds our perspective of comments by geography?
No, I actually think it's, it's, I, I don't think it's a problem to ask if folks are, are residents or something vague like that. I don't think that's.
It'd be nice. I guess if they don't want to say it, they shouldn't have to say, but we can encourage it.
We can still ask, but I don't think it necessarily require them to state it.
Right, like it'd just be nice to know. I got you. Uh, let's go through each one one by one. I mean, do we have time? It's only eight. It's like the last.
That's what we're starting here. That's what we're starting, number one here. Yep. Um, and so it, uh, you know, not everyone's spoken up, but it sounds like so far there's, there's some interest in potentially moving our policy to it and option of name and reason why you're, you're sort of your role in town, not your role in town, resident, non-resident, unhoused, uh, business owner, whatever that, the reason you're addressing the board. And then having the town clerk collect more detailed information where necessary.
So this is trustee Danforth. Um, so as we go through this kind of change and if we're asking people if they're residents or non-residents, but still asking, wanting more information for the record. When somebody stands up, um, or, you know, raises their hand or dials in, however we're doing our meetings, um, and they didn't sign up ahead of time and they don't want to give additional information, how, how are we gonna go about collecting that? Are, are we just creating, um, more work for everyone to try to get this additional information? I, I'm not sure, I'm not sure how we'd go forward with that, that kind of situation.
Something that I thought about as well, um, you know, after submitting this is that, um, you know, a, a lot of, a lot of cities, a lot of towns do have, uh, the requirement that you sign up in advance and there's limited to a certain number of folks who can do public comment. And it isn't sort of this ad hoc method that we use where we kind of just say, anybody got anything to say? And on one hand, I think that that kind of casualness is, can be nice. Um, but I also think it can be intimidating. It can obscure, uh, process. And if you, the process is not very clear, uh, people might not know whether or not they are allowed to participate or what, how exactly this all works. And I think that having a process is actually better than not having one and making that very clear.
We do have a process and where the people can sign up ahead of time at the beginning of the meeting. And I mean, that's how it's always been done, but that was kind of thrown out. We don't obviously have signups during this virtual type.
Right, so I don't think it actually makes more work then.
Right. Right, I, I guess the question is, you know, if a person, um, cause we also do open it up for people who haven't signed up at our board meetings. They, they have a chance to speak for a shorter amount of time. And then I think trustee Danforth's question is, are we, are we trying to say that Miranda then has to go around and chase these people down to enter their information into the record or not? Or is that adding extra work for Miranda? So, but it, what it, it doesn't indicate is there's room for improvement in our current policy. And in our current approach to this, there can remain some flexibility, but I do think, uh, there is room for a particular sort of, uh, special case. We've had some people come to us in the last year or so whom, for various reasons, whether legal or not, could, chose not to or did not want to give an address. It brings up that anonymity question. So I think building into this policy, a certain number of cases in which anonymous comment is allowed is also an important piece that we, we could adjust for. And my, my thoughts are we're gonna have this discussion tonight, collect some notes on this and then actually try and draft some of this that then come back to us for further analysis. So we're not trying to mess everything up. We're just trying to, to build the envelope of what this policy could look like.
This is trustee Taylor and I'd like to say that the idea of unhoused people participating more fully in the process is very appealing to me. I think that's very important. And I think that as a rule, the BOT meetings are very welcoming. I think people don't show up because they're also very boring, but they're very welcoming. I would be surprised if unhoused people who were informed, say through an inch, that they could come in and speak if they had concerns. I think that would be wonderful. And I think that the key issue, the key takeaway that I had from item number one was the notion of a more formal and more truly anonymous method for speaking to the, for if someone is concerned for their, uh, their safety or property.
This is Baumhofer. Um, I, I'm for dropping the address because there are valid concerns that have brought up, been brought up for many years actually now, whether, um, it's for retribution or, uh, potential paths. Um, there's been plenty of concerns brought. I do feel like we have also had an avenue for anonymous comment through letters to the clerk, which is then forwarded to the BOT requested to be anonymous. I feel like we have received those in the past from people fearing retribution for speaking their mind publicly. That way the clerk still does actually collect that information and that's new that you have for those individuals that want to have that anonymity is they directly reach out to the clerk, write a letter and provide the nation. The BOT is already required to keep executive sessions and confidentiality. So it is well within our purview to then keep those letters, uh, confidential, so to speak, if someone wants anonymity. I feel that we should always require somebody to speak their name and whether or not they are a town resident or not. You can be a, I think it's very simple to say town resident, Boulder County resident, or even Gilpin County resident. That's who we're gonna hear from. You know, that's, uh, not specifying where you are in town or the two larger counties. But I think if you're gonna get up and speak in government, you should have to state your name. But I also feel that there are valid concerns with needing to state your address when you're speaking, especially how controversial, um, many topics have become, especially some of the topics that this BOT will be addressing as well as past BOTs. So I'm for changing this policy. I would still like to keep the one minute of open comment for folks that didn't sign up. And I think we already do provide the signup sheet that's there for folks before the meeting to sign up. If we might want to look at maybe changing where town staff is and see if we can get a town staff member to sit right by the sign-in sheet so that they're monitoring. So if somebody's worried about writing down their address, they know that there's a town staff member there who's constantly making sure and monitoring that other folks aren't writing down somebody's address, uh, seeking to retaliate. So that's what I got. Thank you, Eric, for putting all these things in. Uh, I think we're gonna have some cool discussion tonight.
Interested, right? Let's, uh, let's move ahead to the second about reading around the, reading aloud the rules for public comment in advance.
Can I just add to this one? Sorry.
Sorry, yeah, yeah.
Because I, in, in the spirit of Julian's, uh, request to sort of say what, uh, what problem this sort of solves and that is that, um, meeting procedure, even though it feels open to us, um, you know, I can say that in my first BOT meeting, it certainly didn't. And it wasn't clear, uh, exactly what the process was and what the different, uh, you know, sections of the agenda actually meant. And I do think that part of, uh, being open to participation is not making the assumption that everyone knows and ensuring that, that there's a clarity at every kind of turn of the, of the meeting of like what this is for, what this is about and what the, what the rules and processes are so that people can feel a certain level of comfort in participation. And so that's really the, the impulse that this came from.
The, the impulse for the second one?
That's right.
Get them to, okay.
Trustee Combs, sorry, go ahead, please.
I was gonna say, I do think, um, you know, our agendas have kind of, the form of them has kind of settled in over, well, last couple decades into this form. Um, and yeah, I think something like adding more information into our agenda as to the difference between a informational item, discussion item, action item, uh, on there so that somebody who does come into this as, you know, their first meeting, has some idea of what those differences are is a really good idea. on there so that somebody who does come into this as, you know, their first meeting, has some idea of what those differences are is a really good idea. I think we do try and do a good job of, you know, just your example here about, you know, the public comments and noticing that you're mentioning that everyone can speak for three minutes. Now, those who hadn't signed up can speak for one, those kinds of things I think we do a relatively good job of, but I certainly know that, you know, I've made mistakes and accidentally skipped it in the past or hurried past it, you know, particularly later in the night when we start to get tired. So adding those kinds of details into the agenda so that somebody sitting in the audience could have that as a reference, I think is a really good idea, in my view. Julian?
So this is trustee Taylor. I very much like the idea of people understand what the process is. I actually would propose that this not be something that the mayor says introducing it, but instead it be a sign, a placard that explains what that sign sheet is for. Because I know the very first BOT meeting I attended, I had no idea with the signup sheet there. Perhaps it would be really useful to have a plaque that explains exactly this so that when you approach the room, you can see what you may do if you choose to. So I think that's a very good idea. Part where trustees may or may not elect to respond to comments is the only thing that concerns me. I'm reminded of a quotation I heard a while ago about the B of D in Netherlands. We are not here to argue. We are here to. And I think that's very important. I believe citizens will feel much more comfortable because if if they know they're not going to be confronted, they skilled rhetorician will step forward, make their claim and then request. By the way, whenever Jeanette, my wife, shows up, she generally says, are there any questions? And that instantly invites back and forth from the BOT. But for people who don't say, are there any questions? I think they are going to feel much more coming forward if they know they're not going to expect a debate. We don't respond to people unless they specifically ask us to, even though that is very, very hard. That is hard thing at the Netherlands BOT is not responding when something that makes no sense. But we don't because we want the person to come forward, feel comfortable stating their piece, knowing that if they want to, they can walk away without confrontation. So that's the only part of this that concerns me. I really am starting to feel good about having a placard though. So you're absolutely right. This should be very clear to people, and I think it should be clear to people as they walk in the door. And the mayor may, of course, repeat this, but having a placard walk through the door saying, here's what you can do, I think that might be considered another.
Yeah, I think that doing all of the above is is always the way to go. You know, the principles sort of of universal design, I think definitely apply to meetings that have to do with governance. And that is, you know, not assuming that everyone is equally able to sort of assuming that there might be challenges for anyone that comes into the meeting, but that they have every equal right to participate regardless of those challenges. So providing kind of an oral indication of the rules as well as a as a large visual indication, I think, is is a is a great idea. And actually, that that last sentence was was in fact for the opposite reason, trustee. In that folks are expecting responses and not getting them and taking that as dismissal of their comment by the BOT and taking that as a as a as a slight or affront. And so that was an attempt to suggest that it is that not to be surprised if they if we do not respond.
I appreciate the comment. And I wonder if, so I'm sorry, I'm going full for the placard now. I'm wondering if we could simply say, if you would like to discuss, please say, are there any questions? And then we can discuss. Give the person the option of inviting discussion or not. So perhaps that would be a good compromise.
Yes.
That sounds great.
Because I've never heard anyone respond to comments in a normal, here's the comments.
We've actually, that's been the policy the board is not to, because years ago, it was the type of thing we did and it it devolved into yelling and it undercut the ability for the board to do anything, the relationship between board members and the public. And so it was determined to, you know, this is a chance for public comment. The board member could bring, address those things during, after public comment, during board discussion. Those items could, you know, things are brought up, could be then discussed, but there wasn't a one on one discussion because it was it was found not to be very productive in a lot of meetings. So that was part of why it evolved that direction.
Maybe it could be more organized where.
I think that's according to one of Eric's later points.
Right. That was the intention precisely with that. I I would just say I would be happy enough for the for the policy to be that trustees simply do not respond to comment. That that's just not how it goes. And to make that very, very clear, that we're actually not allowed to. Our policy, it's not that we're saying we don't give, we don't care what you have to say.
Right. And and like you said, it's, you know, it's it's really hard sometimes not to. If you're like, oh, this is a, this is the question we actually know the answer to right now. We can clear it up real quick. But then that opens that that Pandora's box of, oh, now we are responding. Oh, wait, we're not. And it that ambiguity in our own procedure.
Here's where here's where I'm thinking, feeling good about the idea of clearly stating on a placard, I'm full blow, I'm full bore on the placard. Clearly state that if you that that this is our policy, us, the person making the comment asks if there are responses. Or like Jeanette does, are there any questions? Because when Jeanette says, are there any questions, there are some questions. And so if the person making the comment introduces the opportunity to engage in a back and forth, I think as long as we provide a clearly stated signal that person may offer that we can have a discussion, I think that's a good possibility, but that may be a way of approaching.
Other thoughts?
Yes, this is trustee Danforth. While we're on number two here, I think that setting up the rules for participation for public participation, having that on the website on like the Board of Trustees page, kind of like a how can I participate and list out what items people are allowed to have public comment on, how they can sign up, kind of walking them through the process of getting involved and having that right on our website. I think that's a good place to have it. And then also in the packet, if we can have any any more information we can provide in the the outline of the agenda of like, here's your chance to sign up in beginning of the meeting. Look for the piece of paper, look for the placard. Yeah, I think that can help people to get more involved.
I think if someone walking, I'm sorry, this is trustee Taylor. I was just gonna say, I think it would be wonderful if someone walking into the meeting room out of the blue with no idea how to participate, very quickly understand how to participate, even if they don't have a web browser. An unhoused person wouldn't see that, but an unhoused person would see a placard, actually if it's clearly displayed. Yeah, I I'm feeling, I think this is a very good idea overall that make the rules very, very clear to encourage participation. And I think a number of good things we could do to make that happen.
All right. We will now refer to the placard amendment. Number three, alternate members of methods of comment. Eric?
Yeah, so this this should read, it would be better if it read provisionally that these this is possible. So this is where these things start to overlap, right? So in point one, we have this anonymity issue. And I think that it has become clear to me at least that public comment that is not stated aloud at the meeting is significantly less impactful. I know it's, I think it's difficult to separate what you're hearing and kind of having that sensory experience from what you read a couple of days ago in a packet. So I I think that in provisional circumstances, and I don't have all of them in a bullet point list in my mind at the moment, comment to be read aloud by staff without affect. And I think Miranda has been actually doing a great job of doing that recently. Considering, I think this is one of the reasons why we need that provision is because of the possibility for remote meetings and for, you know, coming back into lockdown if we ever get out of it. That we do have clear policies in place for how that's going to be addressed. And then I do think that we need to signal that we are willing to provide interpretive services for members of our community who might need them and in particular, the deaf community and folks who speak Spanish.
This is trustee Taylor. I feel very comfortable with that proposal and I'm be interested in hearing comments from Karen or Miranda about what process they may go through in order to secure interpreters. I'm with that number multiple bilingual people in Netherlands who'd be willing to volunteer in such situations. But yeah, I think I think that's a very good idea. It helps encourage people who don't speak English natively or people who are deaf to participate.
I think what this is Miranda, I think what it would be is is us.
Karen, did you want to go?
This is Karen. Yeah. So we do provide hearing devices because that was something that was requested and needed. We have looked at bringing in interpretive you know, sign sign signers. The the thing is, it's it is very expensive. Sorry. And I think if 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 the need came up, we would research it and see if there was money or funding available.
I think the I think since of even number three is not that we don't do that. I think this is proof of a lot of these items. It's really about saying, you know, this for if they needed it anyway, because because we're just nice people generally. And as you said, Karen, I know we already provide hearing assistance for some people, some of our citizens who are deaf. And wonderful. And I think it might be good to note that we're nice folks and we will help you with this. And but it would mean that taking such a statement, we would need to look into what the costs would and how we might be able to accomplish it. So, yeah, we we already know that if you're coming and begging and need need help and make it clear that we need help. But it would be nice to formalize this if we had a financial plan for addressing.
Well, I would like to say that I'm available for Spanish translation as I am fluent in Spanish.
Spanish problem solved.
So I mean, for the next couple of years anyway, and when I'm not a trustee, if I'm available, I'd be happy to volunteer this service. I just don't see a huge need for it. So I don't think it's going to be like every week. So I'm not, that's why I say this, but I am happy to volunteer. And I am I am fluent. It's almost my first language.
Yeah, I think that what I intended at the end there is that should it should say with a guarantee for providing is on Spanish interpretation if requested. Right? Not I wasn't saying that it should be there every single meeting.
Except with a seventy two hour notice, which I think that's how it should be. Yeah.
Sounds like this is another one where kind of tying into item two is looking at the ways, the things we already do, the things we can do, you know, things are already available and just making it more clear to the members of the public that, hey, you who only speak Spanish, don't worry, we got, we can figure out how to make that work. You need a sign language interpreter? We'll figure out how to make that work. You know, we can't promise anything, but we are going to do our best to try and make it open for you guys. And we can start including that kind of information on the plaque as we enter the the room or as well as in the packets we put out every week, every every two weeks. That is a real step forward in in demonstrating the openness that really already exists. Do you want to talk about number four?
Yeah, I don't have a ton of hope for this one. But but, you know, I I want to put it out there because I do think it is. It's not something that goes away when it comes to community governance, right? Like child and elder care are some of the biggest challenges that, you know, people across the country and across the world actually face. So the idea that it would somehow stop here, of course, I think is absurd. It it continues and it continues to be an issue for lots of folks. You know, I definitely know it as a as a foster parent, how difficult it is for parents sometimes to to participate in their communities. So yeah, I would love if something like this could is something that we could work towards because I think it really signals you know, the the way that we that we view community governance and the kinds of folks that we want to be involved, you know, not just folks who have time on their hands. Right? But that we want to, we want to be able to help people make time to participate in community governance and that this is something that we are committed to and dedicated to. I don't have any, like I said, great hope that we're gonna, you know, decide this should be baked into policy and that we're actually going to do this. But I I do hope that's something we can maybe think about working toward doing.
This is trustee Danforth. So I was thinking about this one, Eric, and I wonder if once we start doing in-person meetings again, if there was a way to allow people to still participate remotely, almost kind of like a hybrid between in-person and what we're doing here, where they could call in and if they had a comment that they wanted to read themselves, that they could still have that available to them through a phone and and be able to participate that way. That way they don't have to get in a car, because a car could be a limiting factor or transportation getting to the community center. So I think providing a phone line potentially could solve that so people could stay home and participate if there are any other obstacles in the way preventing them from leaving their house.
The trustee Danforth, this is Miranda. So we actually looked into how we could do a hybrid because I know even some trustees were open to meeting in person. The challenge is that multipurpose room at the community center just is not set up technologically speaking to allow for the phone because it would be impossible to then hear the person. So I think while it's not impossible totally, I think we'd have to secure some grant funding or something to to do, make some changes in that NPR room to allow for that type of hybrid meeting.
Okay. I I think that's worth looking into, though.
Yeah, trustee Taylor.
Trustee Taylor.
I'm sorry. They're jumping in there. So I I I agree with trustee Coombs Esmael that number four is is the crack here. But I do like the spirit of, I do like fulfilling the spirit of it in one way or another. And certainly like trustee Danforth's proposal as a one possibility for doing that. And Sid, if we resign to the likelihood that this is not going to happen in a couple of weeks and we have some time, it may be a good idea to look into grant money that may allow us to do that hybrid meeting. That would resolve childcare issue, but it also resolves other issues that make people from coming to these meetings. So I I like that.
Well, I'll also say I know that the the idea behind this, the the core idea behind it about trying to allow greater participation in town government by, you know, off trying to offset child and elder care is actually one of the reasons why the Board of Trustees went to the public was, I mean, four or five years ago with a vote for actually paying trustees and the mayor. Because the idea, the thought was that it was very difficult for particularly for single parents to look at running and serving on the Board of Trustees because they wouldn't be, they didn't have childcare options. And so the idea originally was that the trustee compensation, the hundred and fifty dollars a month was a way of trying to address that for anyone who needed it and to open up town service to more people. And so this town service to more people. And so this would, this would be kind of the next step of it.
Yeah, I, I also think that this, this extends more broadly into services that the town can actually provide residents. You know, because there's a lot of things that are preempted that we can't do, but things that we can do is these sorts of health and human services programs that we can start to think about townwide. And I think starting at the meetings and starting at, at, at governance is not a terrible idea because I do think that that's in part needs to be a resident of a town and so many aren't, aren't engaged, you know? And to, to make that a sort of fulcrum for these ideas around what we can do as a town to, to help our residents and, you know, provide the structures for them to live, you know, their best lives essentially. That starting at governance and town meetings is, I think, maybe a valuable way to go in the conversation. Like I said, I don't expect this to be instituted, but if, if we, we do push as a, as a board, and I hope we do towards larger amounts of money moving into kind of health and human services per town. Then I think that we can start thinking about instituting programs like this and we will have budget to do it because really I think the budget comes in some ways from the will to make that happen. And I do think we're a pretty creative town and we can probably get it done if we really wanted to. And I want us to want to.
I just want to say that I don't think it's going to be that much money overall that these vouchers. I think if once or twice a year, you know, I don't know, I think we could probably swing it. But that's just me.
Yeah, my major concern is actually not even the money, but the administrative overhead that we're so desperately understaffed and, and town staff are, have to do so much work to put all this together that then to add this like voucher reimbursement program for meetings on top of it is just going to be the final straw, you know?
They would have to show like a baby receipt and then
It gets complicated very quickly.
Or adult care. Yeah.
Yeah.
It's true.
Really my concern about it, but I do want to, I want to bring that up as like if our, if our town doesn't have the staff to what I think to administer what I think is a fairly simple voucher program, then maybe we think about how can we better support staff? And how can we make sure that our town does have the resources to do programs?
Well, I like trustee Danforth's suggestion. I, I think trustee Danforth's suggestion hits the spirit of this suggestion without, without limiting it just to childcare vouchers. And also, once the equipment is installed, should be fairly low maintenance for staff.
You have, you know, at some point we'll have a vaccine and at some point we'll be back together. And I think having that hybrid option, getting a grant and doing it is one possible way to provide that access. It's ironic that a few years ago at a BOT meeting, we were discussing, you know, could we get more people to participate by having an online option as we're doing now? And ironically, we actually have, it seems to be fewer people participating. And I think that, you know, my partner Nancy worked as a volunteer at the library and she said, it, we would be surprised to see how few people or how many people don't have internet access. There are a lot of people in town that do not. Everybody does have a phone. But I don't know if they know they can just phone into this meeting right now. So at least
Absolutely.
Just be communication as well.
Yeah, I don't think tech is a, is necessarily a panacea for these problems, but it could help to alleviate some of them for some folks. So I do think that trustee Danforth's suggestion is good, but I don't think that it's kind of solves point four entirely.
All right. What were your, what was your thoughts behind the other business? Number five.
Other business, I, I guess I personally found it to be a strange agenda item in, in many of the and all the boards that I have served on over the years, there's never really been something so open that allows the meeting to be extended much longer than it's necessarily scheduled for. I thought it would, might be useful to streamline that so that use it because we need to trustees or the mayor, right, to get things on the next agenda. That's a good moment to just simply do that in the, in the previous meeting, just say like, hey, do we want to put this on the agenda? Yes, we want to put that on the next agenda. Here's something we should talk about next. Rather than opening it up to this sort of nebulous, you know, potential kind of ambush other business section where surprise items pop up on agendas that maybe people aren't expecting. And it just felt like it wasn't actually necessary given that we can just decide to put something on the agenda for the next meeting in that section. That was, that was my thinking behind it. That it also, it's, it's also open to just talk, right, to use it, to be able to talk at people without, and it also has no public comment because it's not an action item. And so I just felt that that was a little strange that we could essentially address the public without them being able to respond back. And it felt odd to me. So I, that's what, that's the reason for that. And, you know, I had, I ran this by, you know, numerous folks and that was the overall feeling more that they felt the other business was being used to some, some folks, I think we can glean, right, that like it's being used to address them personally and not give them the opportunity to respond. So I just wanted to maybe alleviate the potential for that to, to happen inadvertently or not.
Um, well, can I speak real quick? I want to have something to say about, I kind of like the idea of other business because we're not really allowed to email everybody together. And so the only time we can ever all get together and actually like say something that's on someone's mind. And maybe it doesn't even need to get on the next agenda, but it might be on your mind is during other business because we can't email each other. And we can't call more than one person. So how else are we going to ever talk about things that might be on our mind?
I guess I don't see why that couldn't simply be something we add to the next agenda.
Sometimes it's
I don't know. No, I've not.
I, you know, having served on the board for however many years at this point, I think in great parts your idea of how to use other business as a, as a way to broach topics for future agendas is how it has been used. Occasionally it comes up where it, a, something has happened with short notice, something that came up after the agenda was published. You know, a lot of the times along the lines of things have come out of the CML. It's an opportunity where it's not necessarily one of the meetings where we do trustee reports. But the CML liaison has something like, hey, there's something happening at the State House this week. Do we want to weigh in? And sort of those, those last minute things. And it's never really, obviously we can't take action during any of them. But it's along the lines of, do we want to, you know, raise our voices or just, I want you guys to know about this bill that's going to be at the State House, should you want to weigh in? So it has that opportunity for things that are out of the sequence of how our meetings are run. But just to give that catch up because we want to be nimble and not get tied into rigid schedules.
I, I do understand the desire for that nimbleness, but at the same time, it does seem like even if that were something added at the last second to the agenda, it could still be added to the agenda. You know, I guess unless you're getting the email at like 5:15 that evening, but, but even like, I just wonder, is there anything that that requires being said at this particular meeting rather than just being sent as an informational kind of email or something. So it, it feels, I don't know. The other, the other business section, it, it, for me, it's really a procedural thing. It's personally not something I like to see on business meetings of this sort of regular meetings. I think that it isn't appropriate to have an agenda item that is just so nebulous and ill-defined. And I guess maybe that's just a personal preference on my part. And it feels to me like it's open to potential abuses and that we should simply close that door.
This is Alan. I guess I have to agree with Tanya, although I understand Eric, I understand your concerns. But it really is the only opportunity we have to bring something in public with the entire board. And it then, it then can become a potential item if we have enough, an out of four. So, but we certainly don't want to add to it if we don't have to.
This is trustee Taylor and I see the advantage of this and I really understand, I really understand the, the goals. I too like it as well. But perhaps this is an issue that can be addressed at least initially by simply changing the theme of it. Other business, but proposals, agenda items for emergency. Maybe just to make it clear that let's ramble, let's come up with a gen, but you're free to propose a new agenda item for the next meeting. Or if it's an emergency thing or something that's happened very recently, you think we all ought to know, let us know that. I, by the way, it should be obvious, don't know calling. But I bet there is a phrase, a short phrase that would define it in his terms. That the basic purpose is to propose agenda items for the next meeting. But also if it's an emergency, you can bring that up.
I'd be perfectly happy with that.
All right. What about the Q and A? Eric?
Sorry. The, the Q and A, again, it's, it's, it's tied to the lack of response at public comment, right? So that maybe there is a moment where we should, I was, you know, kind of thinking of British Parliament and PMQs, you know, the prime minister questions where prime minister has to answer to a bunch of questions that are strictly time limited and given a very precise kind of framework that you say like, okay, you can ask a question, you have 30 seconds and, you know, the, the Board of Trustees will respond if they can. And we'll then we'll move on to the next person and the whole session is strictly limited to 10 minutes and, or something like that. And that it ends there. And that it would be done, you know, first come, first served.
Oh, so you're saying a Q and A as a, as a separate agenda item, not a Q and A on all agenda items?
That's right. A single Q and A for the whole media.
But this is trustee Taylor and while, while I would love to see Chris in that, in rapid fire Q and A. I like this idea as a quarterly event. And I would like to suggest I'm not smart enough to do Q and A effectively without a little research. What I think we might try, and Chris himself has brought this up, oh, is a quarterly Q and A gathering for the BOT and any citizens who want to ask questions. But I would propose that the public submit the questions beforehand so the various trustees can be assigned those questions, research them. And at that point, the actual spontaneous Q and A that in the actual meeting would be more productive because at least trustee would have been able to take the time to research the answer to that question. And then a discussion back and forth would be better informed by data. So I like this idea. I like it as a quarterly event with pre, with probably some sponsored questions, but the key questions should be submitted in advance so we have time to research them.
I think that's a really cool idea.
Anyone else?
What, I mean, I think, I guess I think that's a really cool idea if it would replace a regular board meeting.
Or it could be something
Place a regular board meeting.
I've thought about it as something within the regular board meeting. Because we do have a master agenda that we monitor kind of where, which meetings are looking cool and which aren't. And so perhaps we can look ahead and say, all right, second meeting of August this year. We right now have a light agenda, so let's make the first thing on the agenda. You know, we, we do consent agenda, the, the housekeeping stuff. But then instead of, you know, in the public comment section, we're going to have the, the Q and A session. And we announce it a month in advance, so it gives time for the, the questions to come in, for the research. I, that's the, I've kind of seen this and hope to see it happening. Of course, with everything else, it got kind of side ray, derailed by COVID. But it would be, it might be a fun thing to try, you know, looking ahead to our meeting schedule through the rest of the summer to, to kick off the first Q and A. As long as, as long as I don't have to go full prime minister and wear the wig and all because that, I mean, I got the quarantine hair going on, but that's a little too far.
I think the wig is essential, all of us.
Oh, all of us. Okay. As long as all of us have to wear wigs. Anyone else have thoughts on that?
I, I like the idea. Quarterly is good. I mean, or even every meeting, I mean, I, I, I don't think unless there's something really intense happening at the time that it's going to be overwhelming and we're going to limit it to 10 minutes. So that's going to be the hard part, but.
Well, that's, that's part of my thought is if it's quarterly, then we can have more than 10 minutes. We can actually have some Q and A.
Yeah. I mean, I do like the idea of it because I know people have questions.
You know, I, I love the quarterly thing. The one thing that it doesn't address is those kind of simple questions that we could just clear up, you know, in the course of a meeting. And, you know, I wonder if there's a way to build that in structurally so that is, that doesn't devolve into some kind of, you know, long-winded yelling match or, or anything of the sort. And I do think that with my, with a lot of these, I time limiting component of this is going to be really important. And, you know, really limiting people to three minutes, really limiting people to that one minute. And just saying, I'm sorry, but your time has expired and we're going to move on now. And making sure people know that's how they're, that's how it's going to go in advance so they don't feel blindsided. It's going to be super important to implement any of this stuff.
Now, what would be the possibility of indicating everyone attending the BOT session that they can give a three-minute comment or they have three minutes if they want to ask a straightforward at which point the members of the board could say, wow, we just don't know. We'll, we'll get back to you. But perhaps that is an entirely comment to say, you know, I was having trouble doing this and I had this question. How would this happen? Point, the person is actively asking the board to respond. And I think the key issue that's clicked through my mind is what our attorneys say. Because if someone asks one board member a question and that board member answers the question, that is not the opinion of the entire, and that may not be clear in that session. And that means that they need to issue a disclaimer before the question and answer session happens. And it's a matter of making it absolutely clear that one board member, it does not constitute a decision of the board. I don't think that's hard to get past, but it just
Yeah, that's probably a good idea.
So it actually sounds like in a lot of these cases, there's not, there's, it's not like there's a lot of disagreement amongst us on how to do this. And, and some of the, the changes we want to look at for future meetings. So I guess what I'd propose kind of how to move forward on this is that Eric, I mean, you've kind of taken the lead on this, so I'm going to look to you as take, continue to take the lead. But to work with town staff, myself as well, as we start putting together some future agendas to try and integrate these ideas into the structure of agendas comment policy into our board policies. And I, the way I see it, really pushing that or advertising that those changes to the public would be through additional information within the packet, like a, a header sheet or more information just below, you know, where we already have some information about accessibility of the meetings, adding to that. And also then when we do finally get to meet in person again, this idea of a sort of an enhanced sign-in placard informational section at the, at the door of the meeting room. Does that sound like a good next step to people?
Yeah, that sounds good to me. I would appreciate any help I could get from other trustees on, you know, draft language for the policy and everything, just because you, you're definitely going to notice things that I'm not going to notice. And it's better to get those hashed out in advance at the meeting. So we don't have to draw it out way, way too long. And it's better to get those hashed out in advance at the meeting, so we don't have to draw it out way, way too long.
But I do like the whole spirit of everything on here. So it's, it's a good idea. We do need more public participation.
Any other thoughts, comments? Any thoughts? I know thoughts or comments from the, from the public that is here with us tonight. You guys are the ones who are making the effort to deal with Zoom or WebEx, if you call it Zoom. Our WebEx meetings, any thoughts or comments from you guys?
So Kathleen Chaffey have provided two comments that I'm just going to read as I'm going somehow. Um, okay. We've got, the first one is on number one. She said, I think name should be stated before public comment, whether you live in town limits, but no specific address shared orally. There is no extra work. We still have the signup sheet. Comments are to be included in the town record and do get expanded on in the future. They should require the name of the person again, specific address not to be required. And town resident or not should be considered and/or business owner also. Kathleen Chaffey, 30-year resident off Magnolia, business owner. And then her second was in regards to Julian's comment. I believe this was for item number two. She said exactly, Eric, the public comments are taken as dismissal for years now. The normal policy for the BOT was not to respond to any public comments. Those of us who have been ignored, when we do post questions exist. And we see that yes, and then other special people always get actual conversations with the BOT while the rest of us sit there ignored. They've asked questions and have asked for explanations, and I have got nothing in response. The net has had special treatment for years. Ask the 40 people who again and again, who came again and again to the STR issue and were ignored. Whatever is decided, it should be fair for all, but people need feet. And that's it. Those were the two.
Okay, we lost you there for a minute. Anyone else have any comments?
Hi, Chris. Yes, please. This is Jessie Anzari here.
Welcome, Jessie.
Yeah, thank you. Just a couple of things. I do support providing a name and whether you're an in-town resident or not, possibly area resident or business owner or unhoused, whatever more they feel comfortable providing. And maybe no address collection for now until in-person meetings. That sounds pretty complicated for staff to do. I think it was number two. I do like the ad hoc nature of public comment. So it can all be signups. You do need a moment for people to respond, so I do like the one-minute comment period. And I think a policy of not responding to public comment makes sense, but maybe an acknowledgement to the public that the comment was heard, was appreciated, and, you know, will be responded to. Whatever kind of wording you can think for that. I like trustee Danforth's suggestion for a public involvement section on the BOT webpage. And I'm just wondering if there's a signup right now for the current public comment section in the online WebEx meetings. I haven't, I haven't even considered, considered that right now. Moving on, like maybe advertise that you do provide hearing assistance and that you have interpretation available if requested. I think that would be a real boost to people knowing that you were disabled friendly. I love the vision of providing child or elder care for town participants. I do think you'd have a lot more community involvement, especially with advisory boards. If there was a way for people to participate remotely or with child or elder care. Remotely is pretty easy. It's a lot easier for me to join the other board meetings. The other town board meetings, it helps as an advisory board chair to stay informed of the other board meetings without having to travel, you know, to six board meetings a month. And as the town advisory board chair, I am fine with our pro-sab meetings being streamed. And any efforts that could help us communicate transparently with the other boards, I think it's a great tool. So yeah, I think this is a real benefit. Other business, I, yeah, I do understand and I agree with trustee Taylor's comments on that, the optics, you know, having the opportunity to provide agenda items, and I do support a quarterly Q and A. I think that would be super cool and community building, I think. And then lastly, just thank you. Thank you to Mayor Larson and thank you to all the trustees for kind of addressing inclusivity and for discussing ways to engage the public. I think this is really important and to address residents' safety. So I'm very grateful for this issue and that it was approached in a really timely manner. Thank you. That's all.
Thank you, Jessie. Anyone else? I do think that Jessie did bring up one, one important point is that we are, we're looking at this from the lens of the BOT. But anything we are doing in terms of our accessibility policy and to try and increase in involvement should also be part of our advisory boards from all of them. So I think it's a type of thing we should also be working with the chairs of those advisory boards to ensure that, you know, what we're doing is in line with what they're doing. And we're still working on all fronts to, to get people involved, from pro-sab, sab, easy A, even the quarterly meetings it has, all the way up to the BOT.
John Scott for the Mountaineer Newspaper.
Hey, John.
How are you all tonight?
Pretty good.
Regarding names at meetings, I just wanted to point out from a press perspective, if a person goes to a public meeting, then I have the right to get their name and address. I'm glad to work with the board to only publicize what you all want. But if the Daily Camera or Channel 7 decides to show up, I can't guarantee that they would agree with your requirements.
Okay. Thanks, yeah, I definitely don't see the, we don't see what the press sees on that. In terms of what rules to work under.
Yeah, that's a little different situation.
Yep. Any other public comment? Okay.
Oh, really quick, I had to, I had to mute the phone that Ron was calling in on just because of background noise. I just unmuted it. Ron, did you have anything? I would hate to miss him because of that.
No, I actually went, left the meeting and went to another call for the last five minutes. I have no comments.
I just had you muted, so I wanted, I just realized I wanted to give you the third.
All right, well, I think we'll, we'll work on that. We'll work on, work with Eric and drafting and all the board members are too. If you have ideas on how to phrase those, send comments to Eric. And we'll try and pull that together. And I think I will also at our agendas along with Karen in the next couple of months to try and, try and target one of these experimental community Q and A periods where we can do, do the full thing and try to see if that, if we get some interesting questions that we can prompt conversation with the public. So looking forward to that. We have a discussion item tonight, which is the SWOT analysis for InVision 2030, and I believe we're turning to Miranda for this.
Yes, so the plan for the Board of Trustees is to engage in a larger discussion about these SWOT questions at the July 21st meeting. And what, in talking with other boards and commissions though, it was, had been determined that what's best is if you all email me your answers to these questions, so I can then consolidate the information so that we're having a fuller conversation on the 21st rather than, you know, it's just the first time you're kind of spewing out some answers. It also helps to determine if there's similar responses. So the ask of you tonight is to not answer these tonight. It's actually for you to email them to me, your specific responses. Send them to me within a week from today, so by the end of the day on July 14th. And then what I'll do is I'll consolidate the answers and we'll bring this back as a larger discussion item on the 21st with all of that information embedded into the aim. So that's kind of first part. Second is that we did release the analysis, these same questions to the community on the first. And I have received about 15 comments back so far, so we are encouraging people to still go on and do their online survey. We also created a webpage, InVision 2030. There's an icon on the upper right-hand corner of the front page where you can see that. And as we get the feedback from all the boards and commissions and external and internal stakeholders, we'll start to upload that information on the website. And finally, there's a logo. I've actually gotten a lot of comments that the logo is creepy and Halloween-like and too dark. So I'm going to send you all, we have a ton of options. I'm using just a logo creator for this. And we have lots of options. I was going to send the board maybe about six of the options we came up with and have you vote. But this is not going to stay a logo because it's far too creepy for a lot of the community members. Really just, are there any questions for me?
I'll ask you why there are vultures circling Netherlands.
Yeah, exactly.
You know, at first glance, you're like, this is really cool. And then we put it out there. And then when the first person said that to me, I was like, oh, you're totally right. Like, it looks very creepy, so sorry, we're going to fix it. But we'll just email you. I mean, we'd like you to then maybe vote. We'll email you some options. The goal is the image on every single InVision 2030 document, that uniformity, but this is not going to be it. This was just, you know, looked cool the first go around. Other questions, concerns, thoughts?
I was just going to, I know that there have been some complaints that this exercise not generating a vision for the 2030 vision. And I just thought I would, that we should look back to George Washington for that. Wherever you're going, you have to start where you are with what you have. And I believe that this questionnaire is a very good way of figuring out where and what we have. And I think it's a good start to eventually develop a vision.
Yeah, I have received a lot of feedback, you know, with concerns about the strategic planning process. And I have to just remind people, this is really just step one, and we can fine tune and adjust those phases as we move forward. But this really is to get that baseline of that current historical to then build those future statements.
Tanya, or sorry, Miranda. Obviously, this is being posted on town, social media, things like this. Are we doing anything else to get outreach to the community?
We'll just continue to do updates. We have physical copies available at Town Hall, which I need to post about. I mean, my hope is to collaborate with some other, or businesses like libraries, some other organizations in town to get it out there. My plan is kind of week by week to just do continuous updates of the opportunities. People also, I have a resident who wants to come and visit. They sit with me and answer the questions. So there's lots of ways in which we can do it over the phone. I mean, I'm happy to do anything and we'll get that posted, people's options for giving that.
Yeah, I guess I was thinking, you know, if we could use this incredible logo, I changed the vultures to bats. I think that might be interesting, but that with the, just sort of a, you know, here questionnaire and then the link to the website questionnaire or whatever, you know, at the post office. I just places people can see it as quickly as possible. Or just to get, just to help get the word out there, you know, the link to the website and.
Yeah, one other thing, you know, originally we were going to close this at the end of July, just given the, right now with the surge for COVID, we really are not looking at having that public forum at the end of July like we had originally talked about. That may even go out until September. So we're just going to leave the survey up until further notice with no end time. And so people can continue. It is anonymous and does not ask for any identifying information. And so people, I'm hoping that will help people feel comfortable sharing their feedback. But yeah, the Gary Sandman, we've talked with him and he knows that maybe, fingers crossed, we could do September for an in-person community engagement forum.
Yes, this is Alan. I think it's a good first step, and I should get something in the Mountaineer to publicize it as well.
Yes, I'll send you all logos tomorrow because if we can maybe pick one by next week, that'd be great too, so I can push it out on all the different newspaper and then flyers and all that.
And Alan, I'd be happy, you know, I've been doing regular columns for the newspaper. And so the next one I do can kind of reintroduce this topic. I'll work with Miranda on where we're at with collecting information and, you know, do an article specific to it. I think that's a great idea.
Good, thanks.
The biggest takeaway is to please send me your answers to those questions by next Tuesday, the 14th.
So you want us to answer it? Is there like the survey? You want us to click it and answer it? Or do you want us to send you a personal email with our answers?
Yeah, if the board could send me the email, that would be helpful because I will be able to discern, send it to the survey. I won't know.
Okay.
Thank you.
And now that, that link that you have, is that something we should be pushing towards community members then?
Yes, I would love that.
Fill out.
Should a meeting to change the logo, everything else?
Put it on our email list.
Yep, please, if you said, yeah, that link will take them with the survey, the first thing you see, and I'll take them right to it.
Okay, thanks.
Any comments? All right, well, then we have our homework. We all answer these questions and also start pushing that, that website and survey to our networks on social media and otherwise. I almost feel bad about saying this, but on our agenda, the next item is other business. Does anyone have any other business they'd like to bring up tonight?
I do. I do.
Yeah, Tanya.
Really quick, I just want, I just want people to start thinking in lieu of what's been going on in Big Springs and past situations that just as you guys did short-term rental revisions, I think it's time for some long-term rental homeowner oversight, legislation, codes, that kind of thing. And I'm just not saying we talk about it at all tonight or even to next week. But I think that we need to start thinking about the same problems that we saw with short-term rentals existing with long-term rentals and the impact on our community when homeowners are not engaged and know what's going on. And it's, I think we have a lot of negligent landlords, landladies, whatever in the area. We have great ones too, but also in the fence, not, we're not talking about illegal activities, but just people who have had hot water heaters broken for a month and nobody fixing them, stuff like that. That's not cool, and we need to start looking at that. That's it. I want to start planting the seed for future conversations.
All right, thank you, Tanya. Anyone else?
Alan, I have, I have one item, just real quick, and I brought this up before. I think apparently the town has good service from CenturyLink, but I don't think residents do. And I think we really need to look at the infrastructure. I was talking to a former employee who said that Netherlands has ancient equipment and it needed to be replaced a long time ago. And nobody is calling CenturyLink on the carpet to ask for better service. And I think we should talk to them and see if there are other alternatives for high-speed internet, because I think we're we're woefully behind the times with what we have here in town for residents. And at the same time, I realize with the virus, everybody working, that the system isn't going to be as good even than it was before. But I do think there's a lot of room for improvement, and I'd like to see us have them in for a discussion at some time in the not-too-distant future.
Yeah, I back you up on that. I totally back you. But I have four, that's good. And that's pathetic for most people. Not, most people who don't live in Netherlands, that's pathetic.
If anyone has any way of getting in touch, I have been trying to reach out for the last two months to CenturyLink and all the contacts that I've had have gone unanswered, so.
It's time to start a public utility, people.
There you go.
Let's reach out to Mountain Broadband. They can provide high-speed internet up here. They're a local company. They're starting to basically come in where CenturyLink is ignoring the mountain folks because CenturyLink is running off of Questold infrastructure. So if we can get the number to Mountain Broadband, that would be who to reach out to. And as soon as you're in talks with them, I bet you CenturyLink will call you back.
Yeah, or NedNet, you know, we could, we could leave this open. Yeah, I like that idea. Screw CenturyLink. Well, maybe I'll screw them. I still need them. Don't turn off my internet. Not yet.
You know, I just want to say that um, I would love to bring Randy into this conversation because, Alan, when you brought this up a while ago, I know Randy got back to us on it. And we actually didn't renegotiate with CenturyLink for town infrastructure. And I got quite a bit of improvements and some fiber laid uh, based on our relationship with them. So I I I, and you know, this is not my area of expertise, so I certainly don't want to misspeak. But um, I I think if if Alan, you could craft your specific question, maybe you and Chris Larson, and let's get Randy to answer that. We do have CenturyLink people we work with. Now, I will say we we the last deal we made with them basically was when we went from the analog phones to the digital phones, and so we did an upgrade with them, so it's been a little while, year and a half, two years. But I do think he should be in on this conversation so that, you know, he can clear up any assumptions or, you know, provide the kind of answers you guys are looking for.
Yeah, well, we need better service, and I think they need better equipment to do it. And the question is, will they invest in our community or not? And I think we should bring some other people to the table and and put this out for a bit and see what we come up with, but. See what they have.
And and I'm I'm what I'm trying to say is that we have connections to CenturyLink for infrastructure with town that basically we've been able to upgrade. But again, everything comes to budget, right? When you're talking about the town budget and town infrastructure, you're talking about a whole bigger conversation about the services CenturyLink brings to the entire community. And so what I'm suggesting is that we might have a contact that can open that door. And because we're already such good customers with them, um, you know, I think we could help facilitate that. And then Randy, with his knowledge, can provide some of the answers as well. But just having him part is a part of the conversation. So I guess, you know, I I'm not sure exactly what next steps are, so maybe Chris and Alan, you communicate with me and we'll bring Randy into it and figure next steps.
Sounds like a plan.
Sounds like a plan, yeah. Sounds good. Thank you.
Further other business?
Motion to adjourn.
We have a motion to adjourn. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second from trustee Coombs.
Coombs is mild.
Uh, Mayor Larson?
Yes.
Trustee Taylor?
Yes.
Trustee App. Trustee Danforth?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Baumhofer?
Yes.
Trustee Corvlin?
Yes.
Trustee Coombs is mild.
Yes.
Meeting is adjourned, and to everyone, have a wonderful rest of your night. And uh, yeah, talk to you guys all again soon.
Thank you, everyone. Have a good one.
Thanks, everyone. Bye.